Welcome everyone and call this meeting to order the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting held Tuesday, December 11th, 2012. Would you all please rise and ask Dr. Flowers and students to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hodges for some recognitions that we have to offer this evening.
Well, I think first of all, we have recognition of one of our employees that's been presented to us, and Mr. Burchett is going to make that presentation at this time. If Gary Steele would come forward, we'd appreciate that.
Hi Gary. It is my pleasure to make a presentation to you tonight. You were nominated, I guess would be the correct word, by Jan Dunham, and I think she's in the audience tonight. And I'll just real quickly read what she said, if that's okay. She said, "I had the pleasure of working with Gary Steele this past summer and fall during professional development opportunities that I had scheduled at the WTCC auditorium. Mr. Steele was a tremendous help in making sure the trainings ran smoothly. Mr. Steele made sure the auditorium at WTCC was set up to the satisfaction of the speakers, and he came running whenever we had a need. He was always pleasant and willing to work through whatever issue that we presented to him. Mr. Steele's willingness to take time from his already busy schedule to make sure speakers and staff were accommodated was very much appreciated by all. The speakers commented on how nice it was to have someone like Mr. Steele available to respond to their needs." So I have this congratulations certificate for you, but I think we really ought to call that a thanks award. And so Gary, thank you for going. I kind of above what's expected of you, and I tell you, Gary's a fine young man. It was my pleasure to have him as a student many years ago, and he was that kind of student then that all teachers want in their classrooms. So, good job Gary, appreciate that.
Board, as you recall, last month, we talked about the new A to F accountability system that the state has put in place where all of our schools across the district receive letter grades. And we thought that it would be appropriate to recognize those schools in our corporation that received As, and so I see that we have building principles here for them. And so we have certificates that were suitable for framing, and we did. And if, I would like to, these are not in any particular order, but Mrs. Cusaro from Maplewood would come forward. We'd like to present this plaque to her. This represents tremendous amount of work by her staff, by her, and by the kids, and the parents, and everybody else, and we just want to say congratulations to you for that, and we hope to see that proudly displayed in your building.
And it will.
Mrs. Dunham. Connersville Middle School. And again, this is just a small token of our appreciation for the hard work that's going on in your building and the great performance that you experienced.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams. Eastview Elementary School. Proud to be an Eagle. Congratulations. Good job. Appreciate all the hard work that goes on in that building on a daily basis. Thank you. Last but not least, Mrs. Rollins. On the grading system that we have, you can pick up bonus points, and the maximum number of points a school could get was six points?
In English Language Arts and in Mathematics.
And Fayette Central had six points in both of those, so it just doesn't get you that.
At this time, Dr. Flowers, we'd like to turn the program over to you.
Thank you. We appreciate this opportunity to highlight one of the programs at CHS, and it was such a difficult decision about what to highlight, and we finally decided we'd err on the side of entertainment since it's the holiday season. So, and always you can count on our CHS choirs to give fabulous entertainment. And, but tonight, instead, we're going to be featuring our keyboard and piano class. We thought we'd start, because I know all these presentations start with a little bit of data about your school, and so we thought we would start with that, if you don't mind. It's just a few slides. This first one, I hope you, I don't know if you have it on your computers or not, I guess not. It's a little tough to see, but you've already seen this, actually, and this is the accountability report for Connersville High School. We ended up with a 3.4, which is also what the corporation ended up with. And you'll notice, if you look across the grid, that in fact, we're evaluated on four different indicators. Not only do we look at math and English Language Arts, we also need to look at graduation rate, and career, and college readiness. And you'll notice that each of those indicators, English Language Arts, math, and graduation rate, all count 30% of your overall grade. And career and college readiness this year counts 10%. And you'll notice, if you look at what we accrued, 3.5, 3.5, three points in graduation, and 4.0 in career and college readiness. Very proud of our report card this year, of the growth we've shown. And our next slide is actually our four goals that we have that are attendant to those areas. And you'll notice it's pretty much 90, 90, 90. Those are our goals for the next couple of years, that we improve to 90 percentile in graduation rate, and percentage of students passing the ECAs by graduation, and even in improving our attainment of dual credits, which is way above currently the 25% expectation that the state has. So, it's my pleasure, you know, I can tell you about so many programs at the high school. It would be fun to talk about our freshman center, our freshman success coach, her latest fabulous development, which is our Gleaners School-Based Food Bank. We could talk about our emerging ECHS, and the fact that we're going for full endorsement this year. We could talk about, oh, our finance academy, to Project Lead the Way, to any number of programs, and any number of events, and honors that our students have accrued. But I think it's really critical that you take a look at a group of students who really come into a class as beginners and make unbelievable progress over the course of the semester. And that's so true in the performance of the students in our piano keyboarding class. What's interesting about this class is that three years ago, Roger Tyler wrote and got a grant from Rush Shelby Energy, and I forgot to put the energy up there, they probably wouldn't like that. And each year, he's written a grant and received one from them that's improved something about our music department or our choral programs. So congratulations to him for having that kind of impetus. And tonight's presentation features three, possibly four students, and they are, if I may, when I say your name, if you wouldn't mind standing. Gina Milano, Megan Ratliff, and Calvin Kafflinger. And each of these students is going to present for you after Mr. Tyler tells you just a little bit more about the class. Mr. Roger Tyler.
Well, I have two sections right now, and there's 16 keyboards, and we had, we have a waiting list now. Mr. West called me over at the end of last year and said, "There's 82 people signed up for your keyboard lab." And I said, "Well, we can't have 82 people. I can't teach five sections of keyboard and two sections of choir." So, we had to put some of them on a waiting list. But, and each of the keyboards, through a system of ethernet cables, is connected eventually to this little box here, which I, it was easy to take off, so I brought it. And I have access to talk to each individual student in the lab, or I can talk to everyone, or I can talk to a group of two or three. Each student has a headphone and microphone. And so that's basically how I do most of the performance-based assessment, is through individual, we'll do some instruction to get going at the beginning of class, and then it's all individualized. We'll have weekly or bi-weekly recitals for some other assessment, and then of course, weekly or bi-weekly quizzes and tests at, you know, the end of each semester, and midterms, you know, for all the, to make sure they're getting all the other knowledge-based things and not just performance. But that's basically all I wanted to talk about, because I want to give each of these students, there's different levels. Some of the students come in with no background whatsoever, some of the students have had piano lessons, and they want to have more time on the piano and progress from there. And some of the students have a band, and we had, we had, we had a band student that was going to be with us, but they couldn't make it here for wrestling practice. So, we're going to start with Gina Milano, and she's a senior, but this was her first experience with piano, and her first time in the lab, and she's going to play at the level that she's made it to this semester. We've done a really great job. Another standard that we're expected to teach, which is very difficult to teach, is creativity and composing. And you're actually, and, so you have to have a lot of understanding and knowledge to do that. And Megan, who's also, Megan Ratliff, who's also a senior, is going to demonstrate a piece, and I may have to cut these last two short, because they have a lot of pieces, but she's going to demonstrate a piece that she has written. And last but not least, Calvin is going to play Fur Elise, which is a more advanced piece, and he may not be able to play all of this, but he understands that this is a presentation, not a recital. And he's an example of, have you had the class a couple times?
Twice.
Okay.
As you can see, we're so proud of them, and thank you.
Thank you all so much, and I believe we have one other additional presentation this evening, and I'd call upon Mrs. Dunham.
Roger, is she, when she's talking, is there a way that we can move the piano and kind of get set up for this next piece? I appreciate that.
I'm trying to get over the goosebumps. That was awesome. You know, as important as all the poor academics are, and obviously, we all have our high standards for that, just like the keyboarding class, I think it's really important for our students to have a lot of opportunities to excel and challenge themselves, and just to really take what talent they have and extend it into other areas. So, and at CMSS, that's just a real important part, as well as the high school, to give students those opportunities. And without teachers like Mr. Tyler, and our staff, and their staff that are willing to sponsor the various clubs and activities, they wouldn't be possible. And trust me, they don't get a huge chunk out of the budget for doing that. So, it is very much something they do because they want to do that for the kids. Tonight, we were invited to come and share with you one of our club activities, and it is from our speech team. And first, when you think of speech team, you're going to think of someone's going to stand up here and provide with you a speech, and that's not necessarily the case. And I think that's why it was unique that our students were invited to come and share with you what's called a duo. It is our fifth year this year for our speech team, sponsored by Chris Greason, and does an excellent job. And the students tonight have competed twice. The last competition was, the first one was in Burbuff, and there were about 80 teams and doing the duos, and they were placing, they, they score them, and they had two first and a second. Then at last Saturday, they were at Carmel, and out of 56 teams in duos, they actually placed fourth for Connersville. Now, these, this is the girls' first year in doing speech, and there are various categories that they can perform in, and they have chosen duo. So, I'm not going to take any more time, but I would like to introduce two students to share with you a different aspect of speech than I think you may have seen before, and that is Chloe Dorkflying and Cassie Frye. I want to introduce you and let them entertain you.
We can do this.
You're out of your mind. And I'm out of mind for agreeing to it.
You want to play football, right?
That's all I've ever wanted to do since I was a little girl, but they won't let girls play.
Well, honey, today's your chance. Look Laura, it's the first day of practice, the coach doesn't know anybody, and we have our hair tucked up under these stupid helmets. By the time he figures it out, we'll be stars, and he can't possibly say no.
You still sound like a girl.
Oh yeah?
Now it's King Kong. Stop that. Listen up, he's talking. Full contact on the first day. Maddie, you said we'd run a little and learn a few plays. You said they don't have full contact for weeks.
What kind of man are you, soldier?
A girl man?
Come on Laura, we can do this. I mean, just look at them. They can't be that big.
Tell my mom I love her. Tell her I was a good girl. Tell her I didn't mean to die this way.
Is there anything worse than death?
Football practice.
No, it's a hoot.
You mean a hut? Hut, hut, hut.
Like Ken Bradbury. Come on, they're warming up.
This is torture. These pads are heavy.
Stop whining, or they'll know you're a girl.
That was the sexiest thing to say.
Just don't cry, or we've had it. Is it time for the first game yet?
They aren't even breathing hard. You said set your pads. What's that mean? Just do what they do.
Hey, hey, stop that, that hurts.
It's supposed to hurt. This ain't cross stitch, honey.
Okay.
Ow, ow, whoa, take it easy.
Come on, you little wimp.
Ow, ow, whoa, hold it, what's he saying?
Line up against your man.
I don't even have a man. I'm just fourteen.
Another football player. Oh Maddie, they're going to have us tackle each other.
Take Kevin. He's a nerd.
But he's skinny. He's got pointy bones. What if he jabs me with his chin or something?
Jab him back. Come on, girl.
Okay, who's left?
There, there's one guy, oh no.
You got Spike.
I got Spike.
He was the league's leading tackler last year. Maddie, he'll kill you.
He'll kill me.
Somebody said he eats nails for breakfast.
He'll kill me.
Hurry up, the coach is looking at you.
Hi Spike, wanted you to know, I'm a real fan of yours. Got your picture in my locker.
Not a great line for a boy, Maddie.
Kidding. Wanted you to know, the doctors just sewed my leg buck on, so I'd probably have another two months to live. Just wanted to play a little football before I die of this highly infectious disease.
Oh, good grief.
And by the way, Spike, great shoes. Yes, they are, just like mine, but on you, wow.
Would you get into position?
He's going to kill me.
They're about to hike the ball. Brace yourself.
What a position to die in.
Hut, hut, hut. Hut. Maddie? Maddie, are you all right? I can't move, talk to me, Maddie.
Don't talk to me. I'm dead.
You can't be dead. You're talking.
If you felt how I feel right now, you'd eat your words. Believe me, I'm dead. I've heard what dead feels like, and this is it. Look, sparrows in heaven. Who to guess?
You're not dead, Maddie.
Then why can't I move?
Because you've just been hit by a truck.
But what about you?
More like a Toyota, but it did the job. Kevin came out with his elbows. He looked at me and screamed, "Banzai!", and hacked me with his elbows. They're like razors. I think my nose is missing.
This isn't going well, Laura.
This isn't going at all. They're all standing around staring at us.
They're staring at you. I got crunched up deep into the dirt, they can't even see me.
Why are they staring?
Where's your helmet, Laura?
Oh no.
Me too.
Oh my gosh.
What?
I didn't do my hair before we came out.
Stop sounding like a girl.
Listen, Spike's apologizing. He said you remind him of his sister.
Yeah?
Yeah, the one who's doing seven to twelve for armed robbery.
Great.
Now we've had it. Here comes the coach.
Does he have a gun?
Clipboard, but I think it's loaded. Come on, let's take it like a man.
That wasn't even funny.
He's just staring at us.
I've never seen a man's heart explode that far.
He can't believe what he's seeing.
I can't believe what he's seeing. How'd you ever get me into this?
I-
Quiet. I think as soon as he's done laughing, he's going to say something. Man, this is like being lost in a forest of linebackers. I've never felt so small.
Or so stupid.
Here it comes, coach is about to say something.
What's a tackling dummy?
That thing they knock down and drag all over the field. He says he's going to need a couple of new ones if we really want to be a part of the team.
One of our volleyball tryouts.
Ten minutes.
We've just got time, but bring your helmet, we may need it.
Hut, hut, hut.
For they performed at Kitchen Cabinet last week, and we spend a lot of time talking about the academic side, we don't talk a lot, a lot about the arts. They are very, very important to what we do here at Fayette County School Corporation, and I thought with what Patty had planned with, with Mr. Tyler and his students, I thought that this might fit quite nicely. And so, at the last minute, Beth was kind enough to get this arranged. Dare I say, these are energizers who came to talk to you about football tonight rather than energizing in the basketball game. But we appreciate them being here, and I appreciate you allowing me to sneak something in here kind of at the last minute, so. I'm going to give my thank yous if you want to do your thing, that's fine.
Well, thank you all so much, and you were all certainly welcome to stay if you cared to, but we understand if you choose to leave this evening. And again, thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. We have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's a hose-like sign. Do we have any patron comments on agenda items this evening? Thank you, Mrs. Dunham. Moving to our consent agenda, item A, approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of November the 13th, 2012, and executive session of November the 13th, 2012. Item B, personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences. Item C, approval of November 2012 claims, number 29975 to number 30285. Item D, approval of November 2012 claim, 30288. I abstain from this item. Item E, approval of year-end business office procedures. Item E, approval of year-end business office procedures. And item F, permission to investigate the 2013 school bus purchase plan through the state bid list. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as stated.
Thank you, Mrs. Savoy. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Thank you. Moving on to action items. Item A, personnel report. Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, Dr. Hodges, and members of the board. We have several folks for your consideration this evening. Start off with the certified staff. First of all, we've coaxed Carla Beard out of retirement to complete a one semester assignment at the high school, handle some oral language arts, a dual credit course, beginning second semester. Samantha Halcom has a temporary teacher at Fayette Central effective January 7th, 2013. And Kimberly Oakley, a fax teacher beginning the second semester at Connersville High School. Support staff members, Carolyn Judd as Health Services Coordinator beginning January 7th. Tanya Selvi, Head Start Educational Assistant at Eastview. Extracurricular, we have some coaches. Hope Bentley is a head JV softball co-coach, began late November. Brian Munchel is a seventh grade boys' basketball coach. Jessica Nead is a head JV softball co-coach with Ms. Bentley. And also Kelly Boosterhold, Assistant Varsity Softball Coach at Connersville High School. Those persons for your consideration this evening, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. Bayer. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel report as recommendations for enforcement as presented by Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Aye.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Savoy. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, course additions and revisions. Dr. Flowers.
Hi again. (laughing) I know at the last session, we talked about the various courses that are being updated and/or revised. And there's a nice list for you, you'll notice in front of you. Including the courses from agriculture, which are called CASE. This, by the way, is a national curriculum, much like Project Lead the Way is a national curriculum. Instead, this is for agriculture. And, you know, very, becoming more and more widely known. And of course, Gabe Knobby is very excited about this and has agreed to do the training. And so he's already spent a summer in training for the fundamentals course and would like to continue to do that. And so that's what the two CASE courses are about. One is in animals and one is in, of course, plants. And then you'll notice if you look at the others, I did talk about each of these others in detail at the last session. So really, it's just if you have any further questions before I think you're gonna vote on this tonight. Yeah.
Thank you.
If you have any further questions.
Any further question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. President, I recommend that we approve the course additions and revisions as presented by Dr. Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have a second?
A second, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Thank you. Moving on to item C, Policy 4.33, Electronic Communications. Dr. Hodges.
Board, last meeting, we had first reading on Policy 4.33 and the changes in the policy really are rather minor, but it is supported by an appendix, which we're not asking you to approve, but we wanted to make sure that you saw the administrative guidelines that went along to support this policy. As you remember, Mr. Curtis was with us last time and he did talk about how he was taking advantage of social media to really enhance some of the classes of these teaching at Connersville High School. And so we're trying to bring policy in line with practice. And so I present this to you for a second reading. Be happy to entertain any questions or comments that you might have. And at the conclusion of that, I would like for you to adopt Policy 4.33 as presented or amended.
Does anyone have any further questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Policy 4.33, Electronic Communication.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to add one thing. If this came up because of the dedication of our teachers that we have in this corporation, this would never have occurred had it not been for what our teachers do and how they rise above and beyond call of duty. And that's the reason for this policy and this policy change. And I'd just like to compliment our staff for that, for the things that they do.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Moving on to discussion items. Item A, the 2013-2014 proposed school calendar. Dr. Hodges.
Board, I don't think we normally discuss the calendar at the board meeting. We usually just give the proposal to you. But as you're aware, we have been looking at some different types of calendars. The Calendar Committee has really come up with two calendars to be considered. And we're trying to gather some input from our staff and from our parents to see if they have a preference between the two. One is the traditional calendar, I call the traditional calendar, which starts with students about the 12th of August and it's pretty typical of what we do here. One of the main priorities from the high school perspective is they do want to get semester in before the holiday break. It's really important we keep those two semesters as balanced as we can. And so both calendars will talk about reflect ninety instructional days in first semester and second semester. One of the things that has been talked a lot about in the school communities, not just here, but around the state, is what they call a balanced calendar. We did talk about that a little bit because of some timing of some events here in Fayette County. It really hasn't been possible for us to use that, what's being known as a true balanced calendar. But this year, as we looked at it, we have a second option that would start students on the Wednesday after the free fair, would allow us to take a full week off in October, and we would still finish on December the 20th and get ninety days in for that semester, second semester. We're looking at a couple longer weekends around President's Day, looking at an in-service day on Valentine's Day, the 14th of February. And then there would be no school for anyone on the 17th of February. And then looking at April around Easter, looking at taking Good Friday off and the Monday in St. Joe County, Indiana. That's known as Dingus Day. That would still get us to finish on May the 22nd, assuming that we have no snow days. One thing that I think we might want to talk about is make up snow days. On the modified balanced calendar, if we don't utilize any of those days around those longer weekends as make up snow days, we would only have five days possible to make up and still have graduation on June 1st. I'm not sure I phrased that quite properly, but there's five instructional, there would be five regular instructional days available to us. What's been our history on snow days? Well, I will tell you when I interviewed, I asked, and I said, "We just miss a couple days a year, maybe, most, not really too much." The history has been, my first year here, we missed four days. The second year I was here, we missed three. And then for the next three years, we missed seven days each year. And then last year was really kind of the anomaly, we missed no days. And so when you look at that, we've missed, on rough average, pretty close to that four or five days. And so it makes me just a little bit nervous as to what that might do to graduation. So I just throw that out for conversation if you would have a preference for that. We have had this listed on our main webpage and encourage people to weigh in and tell us how they feel. We have a comment section. It so far has been primarily staff, I think, that have weighed in. We haven't publicized that and that's one of the reasons I wanted to speak tonight, was to make our community aware that if they can get on our website, they can post comments and then they can state a preference as to which calendar they prefer. I think this morning you told me there were over a hundred and eighty responses so far. So we're getting a pretty good sampling, more of a sampling than we typically get on one of these. And, but as I say, that's been primarily staff. And their opinion is important, but I do think it's important we hear from the parents, too. One of the calendars we looked at, from an educational standpoint, I think you could build a pretty solid case for that. But I think the issues that it created for parents for childcare, we decided that that was kind of a nonstarter at this point in time. So we need to be sensitive to those needs. So our hope tonight is to make people aware that this is available for them to comment on. Next month, I will let you know how that turns out and bring a recommendation to you at that point in time. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to entertain those for you.
I have one. Mr. Ely, I know is here, but how will this, what'd you call that, option two, how will that correlate with the surrounding schools and the kids coming into the Career Center? That's always a big issue.
Well, at this time, as Dr. Hodges is probably aware, there's two. The other superintendents are taking their calendars to their boards over the next few weeks. And it's really too soon to comment on that. I'm hoping that this leads the way to the others aligning with our calendar. And in my conversation one-on-one with superintendents at times, it seems it's going that way, but I couldn't say for sure until those superintendents have their calendars approved.
We talked about this at one of the governing board meetings a year ago and then we've talked about it again this year. I would tell you that there are some that are leaning more towards this than others. There's some schools that have said, "Whatever Connersville does, that's what we're going to do." I will tell you, there's one school that's looking at one that's significantly different than us. Probably not next year, but they may be moving to that. But he shared with note that they would make sure that students that signed up for their Career Center understood the calendar and that those students would be expected to follow this calendar. We do have one school that I think is pretty entrenched in the traditional calendar and I'm not sure where they will be at. He was not at the last meeting that we had. But the majority of the schools seem to be favorable to this. Some of the schools this year that I'm aware of that took two weeks off in October, some of the informal feedback we got that that might be too much. One week really was kind of a nice fit and that's really what we're looking at here. Really, the difference between the two calendars, option two starts three days earlier and we take three additional days off in October around fall break. Fall break is positioned what it is based on the nine-week grading period for the elementary teachers. The thought was, we get the grading period in, give them an opportunity to get grade cards done, still have some time to do some parent-teacher conferences ahead of fall break so that they could enjoy fall break rather than working on grade cards and getting those things together. And option two does include a couple long weekends, actually just one additional day around President's Day and one additional day around Easter. So they're really, in some words, it sounds like it's a huge change, but it's not that significantly different than what we've done in the past.
I guess the other comment, and I don't mean this to be positive or negative, it's just simply, why are you looking at this change?
There are a number of people in the Calendar Committee that have asked us to look at that. I think the more schools around the state that have gone to a balanced calendar, the feedback from those schools have been very, very positive. We did, I think when we originally started talking about this, we were concerned about summer loss and anything that we could do to shorten the summer down. But the reality is, we're not shortening summer very much. And as I say, it's a reality, it's just, it's just the way it is when you look at our free fair and the timing of that. We don't have a lot of flexibility to start early. We did look at, I mean, we did look at some pretty radical ideas, a true year-round calendar, the forty-five in-school, fifteen days out of school. But that ended so late in June that we just didn't think that that was sellable at this point in time. The feeling by having the longer breaks, and I will try to get you some data for the next time, but some of the schools that have done that feel that attendance has been better because people know that they have some longer times built in. One of the reasons we waited till when we did start talking about calendar, I wanted to see how some of the schools that this year, for the first time, went to that balanced calendar with two weeks off in October, one week off, and just kind of get some feedback from them to see what they thought and how that was working. Really haven't, really not aware of people that have gone to a little extra time off, some negatives with that. It's all been pretty positive at this point in time.
How long will the survey be left on the website?
We haven't set a cutoff date for that, but we want to have time to be able to process that. We go through the holidays, our board meeting's not till the 15th of January. We can put a date on that as to when. I hadn't really thought about that.
Yeah, that would be kind of nice if people want to stick it on their parents, especially that are not aware of it.
We really were just kind of testing to see how that worked. We had a couple ideas how we were going to get information and somebody saw it while we were just kind of test-driving it on the website and work that out. And we had quite a few hits and it's like, okay, well, let's just leave it up. (laughing) But there is a place to make comments, so we'll keep track of those and we'll share that information with you prior to your adopting the calendar.
Should we do anything to help the public become aware that that's there and available for them to look at and comment on?
I'm hoping our media folks out there, we did ask, we did ask principals to put that in their newsletters that go home so parents would be aware of that.
I'm pretty sure the board would like to hear the comments in the community.
Right.
So are we gonna adopt in January or are we just-
Yes, that's my goal.
Okay, and we'll get the information prior to that.
Right. For parents- I'll look at the calendar tomorrow. We'll put a date as to when to cut off this. So we'll have time to not only gather the data, but share it with you so you have time to make an informed decision.
For parents or that do not have access to a computer, is there another way that they could provide input? Does it have to be done through the web?
No, it doesn't have to be done through, they can call you. (laughing) I'm sorry, but I- No, they can call, if they call in the school and let them know if they can keep track and then share that with us. We're not trying to be exclusive. We really want, we want to know what they're thinking.
I just know there are several out there. It's kind of amazing this day and time that there are several that do not have access to it.
Yeah, one of our principals shared at a meeting the other day percentages of their parents that had access to the internet. And I was really surprised at how low that number was. Do you have any feeling on make up snow days? I mean, this, the committee gave me a hard time because I've always been a staunch supporter of not building and make up snow days because it arbitrarily extends the end of the calendar. But option two really is designed to try to extend that out a ways. We just may be setting ourselves up for some concerns. One of the things that the Connersville High School has traditionally done, which is different than some schools, we actually wait until the school year is totally over before we calculate final GPAs. And so when you say this is our top ten, it actually is the top ten for their entire high school career. Our valedictorian is our valedictorian, where some schools do it at semester, some do it after the fifth, six weeks or the third, nine weeks. We wait till the end. I think that's, I think there's a lot of value in doing that. It just takes time then to make that, make sure your calculations are right. So some schools, if they announce those early, you get in school on Friday and graduate Friday night if you chose to do that. We need a little bit of time to make sure that we have recognized the right individuals.
Is there any flexibility to alter- Is there any flexibility to alter that, to pick out the snow days so you won't have to play wait at night?
If we would, if we, on this calendar, if we would just designate February the 17th and April the 21st as potential make up snow days, that would give us a couple extra days that we wouldn't. Penny's really the one at the high school that is the most concerned. She's the one that calculates all that, and she prefers to have a full week, and that's really what we have in this. The most recent interpretation of statute as it relates to school attendance is you are not to award diplomas prior to the last student attendance day. So if we stayed with option two, and we ended up with seven days, and we would have to come back on June the 2nd or June the 3rd, we really couldn't give diplomas on June the 1st, and that could be problematic. That's the problem you run into.
Well, I know since you're from Alaska, you know what.
I asked Cindy to see how we did on days, you know what, and the use I've taken as ever possible, that I said, "Three years in a row, we missed seven days," and that's significantly more than what you gentlemen that interviewed me told us. I know, you should look at the data, right? It's a real story. Okay, that's really all.
Well, thank you, and once again, we certainly encourage parental input during this next month. At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment that anyone wishing to make the board aware of a suggestion, idea, may address the board at this time. However, any comments that involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. If we don't have any, we'll move on to our report items. Superintendent Discussion Group reports. Principal and Director reports. Director Personnel, Dr. Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Just a couple of items. I'll ask our media to be supportive, and they have in the past, and they just had an article, actually, Saturday's paper included us. But lunch will be served at Maplewood Elementary during our holiday vacation time period. The dates are between December 26th and the 28th, that's the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday following Christmas Day, and also the following week, January 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, that's also Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Be at Maplewood again. Any student who is under 18 years of age will be served a free hot or cold lunch, it's their choice, from 11:30 to 1:30. Adults may also eat during that time. The cost for adults is $2.75, so we look forward to providing that. More information, those have gone in the newsletters as well at the school, as well as the media, and I know we're working with Siobhan to get that word out even more so, and she's contacted her newspaper, and I know that we talked to Mike, who's going to help us a little bit with that as well. So we appreciate our media's support of that program. And then the only other, we have a sub-workshop coming up on classroom management for those subs who do not, unable to attend our first workshop, and that'll be held a week from tonight at 4 o'clock at the Career Center. Those items, so we'll all have, this evening, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. Baer. Director Findings, Mrs. Callan-Pollock.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have two very brief items. I spoke with our local Department of Local Government Finance representative to find out about when we could expect our budget to be worked, and notification on that. And he indicated we're fifth in line, so he has five counties ahead of us. They base that on the order that all of the information is received from the counties, from the assessed valuation to the ratio studies. So it may be a few more weeks, maybe even after the first of the year, before we hear about our budget. And the second item, a couple months ago, you approved the replacement of the cooler and freezer over Christmas break at the high school because that freezer was no longer working. It came originally with the building. We were notified today that the freezer, that those units have shipped from the manufacturer, but they come in panels, and they have, the company will be here on December 26th to assemble those, so it looks like all's falling in place, and that'll be completed hopefully before school starts. Donalds has already been here to cut the curbs and the rubs, so we should be good to go on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent's Report, Dr. Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I just had a couple of comments to add about some of the performances I've seen in the last few weeks with the holidays around, and with kitchen cabinet, just extremely impressed with the middle school. They had a mixed choir and a troubled choir performance, as well as the speech students, very high performing and delightful. We could have listened to them for a long time. And then as well as the high school bands and the elementaries or their performances, if you've had an opportunity, they're very crowded. Last night, I had to stand the whole time, there were no seats left in the end, which is great. The parents are out there to support the kids, and I'm just really impressed, really impressed with the energy and the excitement and the work that goes in with the teachers as well as the students. So just wanted to share that, and very proud of our students and our teachers at this point.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hodges.
Board, a few months ago, I gave you a draft of a handbook for board of school trustees. There were a couple comments that were made. We did add the LGF to the list of alphabet soup that you run into, and so we've made, I've got enough copies. We've made copies of those for you, we have copies that we'll get to the newly elected board members. And the thought is, this might be a little easier reading than reading the entire policy handbook that comes through. I guess it's my responsibility at this time to recognize two people who, this will be their last board meeting, and it's always, it should parting in such sweet sorrow, you know, you think back of where we were when you joined the board, some of the things that have gone on, and we look at where we're at today. And I think in both cases, we can say without a doubt, when we look at student performance, which is what we talked about so much, we are a better spot today than when you joined us along this journey. And so first of all, Leslie, we have a little token of appreciation. If you would be so kind as to come forward, I'd like to give this to you. One thing that, because of a change in legislation, you really got overtime, you got six extra months. But we just have a little token here, it says Leslie Jacobs, 2009-2000. Thank you so much for your service on the board, we really appreciate it. At an ISBA function not too long ago, Brad Wilson, actually the person who was moderating the events, other board members who are not coming back on the board in January, and if so, please stand, tell us who you are and how long you've been on the board. And Brad pointed out, rather loudly for Brad, that he'd been on the board eight years and six months. And so Brad, if you'd come forward, I'd like to present a couple things to you. One thing, as I was thinking about this, why don't you come over here, I just said, as I was thinking about this, and I referred to it earlier tonight, you know, the first time that I arrived, there were six gentlemen that I talked to about this position, and you're the only one that's been with me all the way through from that very first interview up until tonight. We've got one that's on us that took a couple years vacation, we had one that's been on vacation for a couple years, that will be joining us again in January, but you're the only one that's been all the way through, and I so much appreciate getting to know you, working with you, the leadership that you've provided. And this says Brad Wilson, 2004 to 2012. The plaque was too small to say an additional six months. But you've also provided for the last couple years, leadership as our board president, and that's, doesn't pay any extra, as you know, but it does take an awful lot of additional time to work together to provide good leadership, and you've done that, Brad. And so thank you so much for the service you provided at Fayette County School Corporation. And with that, I'll end my report.
Well, thank you for the good of the cause, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I too also would like to recognize Brad and Leslie for their service and thank them. We haven't always agreed about things, but at the end of the day, we were civil, and we respected one another, and when the dust settled, we walked away feeling that the best thing that should happen happened for the students. And for that, I thank you guys and wish you the best.
And I want to thank Brad and Leslie also. Devotion is just tremendous and time consuming. I mean, you have, your heart has to be in this position and, you know, focused right on the kids. So that's great that you gave the time to Fayette County students, so thank you very much.
Seems like we're all headed in that same direction, but I think it's worthy of note. Leslie, I know that you care for kids. She has spent many hours beyond school board duty volunteering, being there for students, and I'm really going to miss you. And Brad, thank you for always being available when I had questions or something I didn't understand, especially when I first came on board, and you were just always there to help, and I truly appreciate it, and well, just thank you is all I can say sincerely to both of you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to comment that I did have an opportunity to be under a couple of other presidents, but maybe just one, I don't remember one or two, but Brad, you have been so fair, and I have really appreciated that. I've sat in on meetings, committee meetings with you where, excuse me, the energy is flowing in one area, and you'll raise that one question, "Well, what about," kind of playing devil's advocate, and I so appreciate it. Sometimes it's things I haven't thought about, and sometimes I like to be the devil's advocate, but I have learned from you, and I so appreciate your fairness. Been a great president and a good friend.
Since I won't see nobody till 2013, Merry Christmas.
I too would like to recognize Brad and Leslie for their extended service and their devotion to this board and to the children of this community for all the time and effort, and those of us that have had the opportunity to serve on here probably more realize the commitment that it is. God knows, I didn't recognize it very well before I got here. However, it is truly very rewarding, and I know that they truly have both been blessed from the experience. Would like to wish all of my other board members here, and the staff and everyone here, a very happy Merry Christmas, and a safe and prosperous new year. Thank you so much.
Well, first of all, I'd like to recognize the middle school speech team, Chloe, Cassie, and Mrs. Denham, and also CHS, Mr. Tyler, and Gina, Megan, and Calvin. The talent that we have here is just amazing, and I am very thankful that we have those opportunities available for our students. And it's certainly been an honor and a pleasure to be a Fayette County school board member over the past eight and a half years, or should I say eight years and six months? The pleasure and the reward lies with the children that we serve. They are our future. The honor has been the opportunity to serve with all of you, the board, both present and past, administration, and all of the Fayette County School Corporation team. Over the past several years, we've been faced with many challenges, declining enrollment and significant funding reductions, and that's just to name a couple. However, because of prudent judgment of my fellow board members, past and present, we have not eliminated any programs, nor have we laid off nor riffed any employee. And one does not look too far to find districts that have been forced to do both. The number one thing that I am very proud of is the continuing improvement in student achievement over the past six years. I certainly take no personal credit for this. I'm simply honored to be one of the team members of a very, very dedicated team. Our children, our future, is what this work's all about, and I want to thank all of you for allowing me to be a part of it, and wish you all are very blessed and happy holiday season. Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I'm going to be a jerk.
We have any objections, meaning the term, thank you.